I'm pretty sure.
Yeah. And she gets home before you, so she'll be able to change and you'll never know. She'll hide it in your closet and say, "Mom, it was there."
Yeah.
I like you here, Dawn.
Thank you.
Great.
Very bright.
Nine o'clock, please.
Let's do it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll reduce the solid waste.
Okay, I am gonna pull D. I wish you'd pull D on the consent agenda. Actually, approve the cargo rate increase for 2020.
Yeah, your current copy on twice a week for ninety-five was fifty-five. It should be fifty, so I brought a corrected resolution and letter. I understand that the letter is just drafted, if you notice. I dated it November fifteenth. That's when I started working on this, so.
Isn't that the new draft?
Yeah, that's the new draft, yeah, resolution.
Okay, so we'll add it on down. Wait, so the letter didn't go out?
No, 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 no.
No, okay.
I was wondering.
No, 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 no. I'm crazy about that.
Oh, it was a vague draft.
That's okay.
Okay. Did anyone else have any questions on the consent agenda? So we're gonna pass this separately?
Yeah.
Do you want us to do that today?
Please.
It was just a typo.
Can you, Bill, just 'cause I'm a little unfamiliar with this, what type of increase does this represent?
It represents about a ten dollar a month. Instead of jumping it, what I generally do, Kathleen, is I, you know, I kind of ask the commercial private sector, hey, where do you have a commercial? Because there's sometimes they'll want us to do that and more discounts for them. And so instead of, you know, a lot of our commercial customers are longtime customers. I just didn't feel it would be right to say, hey, boom, here it here. So last year when I came in, we're just gonna bump it ten dollars a year gradually. So in that way, we kind of stay, you know, we don't hit the commercial entities. Wasn't a large increase, but yet we still wanna be fair to the longtime commercial accounts that have been with us forever. So this was just a compromise that we had reached.
And the increase started last?
Yeah, we started one last year and then we're just gonna do one for this year.
And it's a ten dollar increase across the board?
Across the board, yeah. And then, too, we're also finding that when we do three and four times a week, that kind of changes the routes a little bit because sometimes we may have to drive a little bit further out of the way to get that stop. I mean, you know, we've got some accounts that we pick up five times a week because of the volume they generate. It's just a lot of cardboard. They may have two or three containers sitting there just because of the volume. So I wish they'd put in a compactor, because we have compactor boxes.
So the five times is the same as the four times?
Right.
Is that what you're saying? Okay.
And then on Harris and Randolph, how much is this, how much of an increase?
That's a hundred dollars per container per year.
And then how does that reflect the cost?
Nowhere near. We're probably recording the drop-offs between two and three hundred thousand dollars a year. I'm working on, I'm working on that information to kind of get a little bit tighter.
I saw your email.
Yeah. And the big thing is, right now, as I sit here, we need to replace both trucks that run the commercial route. One is a two thousand seven, one's a two thousand and nine. But what I'm, in my mind, when we do replace those trucks, we have three trucks that we use on curbside that would be cheaper to take those trucks, convert them to a commercial truck, and then buy two new curbside trucks. It's probably about a thirty to forty thousand dollar savings per truck. But the fact of the matter is, right now, the two commercial trucks are hitting us pretty hard for repairs. They're just tired trucks. But when we get, you know, the funds in and it's time to replace them, that's the game plan. And the nice thing of it is, well, the trucks that we take away from curbside can still go back to curbside if need be because they have that can on the front, they have the Corolla can. So those would actually serve a dual purpose. They could do commercial and curbside if need be.
And do these communities, I mean, did you talk to them about the cost?
No. What I wanna do is, I wanna get all of my numbers ready to go before I really go out because what I've done is, is I take the total amount, then I break it down into cost, like, per container. So we have fifty-seven containers out. So then I just take that total cost, divide it by fifty-seven, and that gives the cost per container for the year. And it's, you know, I'm afraid that the cost, the actual cost increase would probably break a lot of township general funds. That's why I came to the board with this alternative financing because at the same time, we want townships with the drop-offs to continue to recycle. We're not in a position to finish the rest of the county and convert them to curbside. But at the same time, I want also be aware of their general fund, too, because the last thing I, you know, wanna do is take away from road repairs or maybe an ambulance purchase or something like that. So that's why, again, the alternative financing for, or fee structure for those communities with drop-offs.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, when I first realized that how much, you know, we were basically subsidizing the drop-offs, it's my understanding that back in the day, when recycling was good and with the generation fees, it was not an issue. You were able to subsidize it. But now, that's not the case.
Right.
It's actually costing us money.
Overall, with their contamination rate of thirty-eight percent, that also impacts our monthly invoice because that higher rate, that also impacts the curbside. So whenever we go out for, whenever we do an RFP for processing, I've already put in there a separation that I want curbside and drop-off done separately. And there's ways to do that. It's about, it costs our current processor five thousand dollars every time they do a composition analysis. So what I don't wanna do is double that. But there's different ways, like doing a bench analysis. You can take like five hundred pounds at different times and kind of go through it because basically, I don't want the curbside communities to be impacted by heavier contamination from the drop-offs.
And then, Bill, my final question would be on the appropriation budget. How does this total match up to the revenue that you're able to raise through fees and?
Well, that's why with, right now, you know, we're scraping money together. And a lot of it has to do with, we have debt payment quarterly of about a hundred eighty thousand dollars, twice a year, eighty-nine thousand to OWBA for trucks and carts. And what really hurt us was when we started writing checks for twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a month for processing on top of it, that just kind of all piled up. So that's why I'm going out and asking for rate increases across the board because at some point, it's gonna teeter for where we can't get back. And that's why, you know, once, especially once I look at the drop-offs, that's three hundred thousand dollars right there that just swings our budget in a whole different direction.
Are you asking how much the revenue is, Kathleen? Is that what you're asking?
Well, yeah, how does it compare to the, to our expenses here?
Yeah, we're probably, we're probably, we've got a revenue, what, about two point six? On a good year is what we budget, but that's why essentially now, what we're doing is we're taking the sale of recyclables out. And between the generation fee and the fee of the services, we're gonna run the district, but we're trying to make curbside, any type of collection we do, cost neutral. We don't, we don't wanna do anything and just cover the cost of providing the service. At that point, we'll be fine. Plus, too, a lot of it is, when we buy trucks, we amortize those over eight years, hoping to get ten. The carts, we've amortized over twelve, we're hoping to get fifteen to twenty. So that's why we want with better equipment upfront because that's what we're finding with now with our two commercial trucks. Those were not spec'd the way we spec'd them now. Those were purchased through the lowest bid. And now we actually use the purchasing alliance that we're a member of. Where all that's bid out in massive trust to the United States, and then we get that price, which is much better. And generally, we can get a truck a lot faster because some of the dealerships are actually carrying trucks in stock. And our team has done such a good job at specing trucks that one of the dealerships just automatically called orders what they call the Portage County Truck. And they're selling that to other entities because we've done the due diligence on it. So, you know, kudos to the team over at Solid Waste.
So how, I mean, a lot of them are wanting to go to biweekly, and obviously, that's less cost to do. How does that offset the operations?
Well, a lot of it is, in other words, we generally, we have an A and a B week. So we take a two-week period of ten days. So for instance, if we have, you know, we have a truck that's assigned to that week for certain areas. So if you go weekly, and let's say we're in your community four times a week, out of that ten days, you're using that truck eight days, so you're paying for that. So on the Fridays, you're sharing that with maybe another community. But if you go every other week, let's say weekday, you're Monday through Thursday, another community on Friday. The following week, we could probably put that truck into other communities. So instead of two communities sharing the cost of that truck, you may have four. So then that lowers, that lowers the rates then because it's shared across a broader, broader group. Yeah, it's just the economy of scale.
So that's actually how you're making it work?
Yeah, I'm trying to make it work because realistically, while in some of the townships, you have clusters of developments coming up, still in the majority of the townships, you still have that longer drivers in the cities.
Right, it's closer.
It's closer, but even here in Ravenna, Ravenna has always been every other week, and it works well. So there's that option. Some community, some cities prefer weekly, and some just say, every other week works fine for us. And it goes back to less trucks on the road, too, or the road maintenance.
Now, for those communities that are opting to go biweekly, if you have someone that needs extra containers?
We provide those at no charge.
Okay, 'cause I knew you had mentioned the other day that you were short on extra containers now. So are we gonna get more containers or?
Well, that's one of the things that we have to talk about with, in the discussion item.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And generally, just so you know, it's about a four-week turnaround from the time we place. But with the holidays, that stretches out a little bit because factories shutting down.
Yeah. And I had had a question on the volunteer customer rate increase. And Bill verified for me, right now, you only have like twenty-five customers that are voluntarily getting, participating in the recycling program. But basically, it butts up to a community that doesn't have curbside, but it's close enough to a community.
We already passed that route. We will not go out of our way to get it.
Okay. And then that costs us one from four dollars to five fifty?
Five dollars a month.
Or five dollars? And it's weekly?
It's weekly.
They're getting.
But then if that community next to it converts every other week?
Biweekly.
Then what we'll do is, we'll contact those residents that are doing the voluntary program, letting them know that it will not be picked up every other week. And their rates will decrease to reflect the every other weekly.
Okay. All right.
Do you have any questions on the consent agenda?
No, to pass the consent agenda.
As amended.
As amended.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rita?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt pricing for business industrial rental containers provided by the Portage County Solid Waste Management District.
Second. As amended, right?
No. He already gave us, I pulled the old, so he gave us.
Okay, I didn't either.
I'm sorry, I just brought one.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's not bad.
He gave it actually to Amy.
Okay. I'll second. Roll calling?
Rita? Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Nikki?
Yes. Okay, the regular agenda, I want Todd in here for that journal entry. He asked a camp question yesterday that I really, I don't understand the question. Hopefully, when he gives me the answer, it was said that we can't pick and choose.
I'll be right back. I'll be right back.
Okay, and I'm not sure what that means, Bill.
Okay.
Is this the only one we're doing at Forestsboro?
No, actually, okay. No, actually, I'm trying to think, either in two thousand eight or two thousand nine, we passed a series of resolutions that we provide free recycling to all the school districts in the county.
So is this a new property?
I think, yeah, I'm not sure what happened to this, if it was.
It didn't get taken off, is that what you're saying? So now we're doing catch-up?
Yeah, I think so.
Oh, that's part of the explanation of Todd?
Yeah.
Remember those things I brought to you and I said, "We can't pick and choose"? We had a question on the Streetsboro?
Yeah.
Owned by the schools?
I don't know what the other issue was, but this one is a property, it's owned by the school. It's listed in the auditor's records as residential, that's why it showed up in our billing.
Okay.
The school called, questioned about it, and we don't service the property because it is an office used by the school. So we need to take it off.
Okay. So this is a good journal entry, then?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the journal entry to remove recycling charges from eighteen eighty State Route three oh three. This is an exempt property owned by Streetsboro City Schools.
Second. Roll calling?
Rita?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Todd. Okay, discussion?
Discussion item, item B, Garfield Street, Ravenna Township. I sent you pictures. This is sort of like a ninety-degree turn. I've been out there a couple times. There's one abandoned house on there, on that street, and it's literally littered with trash. You name it, from couches, TVs, to general trash on both sides of the road. The trustees are trying to get it cleaned up. It consumes a lot of Alex's time because once it gets cleaned up, the next day, there's something else out there. There's no streetlights, there's a house on one side and then an intersection on the other. We've talked to the township, what their goal is, is to abandon that section of the road. But I've just asked them to make sure that they do their due diligence because part of that is, the last picture that you have, those concrete blocks, those are ours. And my recommendation to them was, you know, if they want to abandon this road, would be if we don't use those blocks, we could just declare them obsolete and then just put those across the road because then they're still easier to move. You just need a chain and a backhoe because there's a piece of rebar on the top of them. And just put them too high, you know, paint them yellow, facing out, put signs on them. But I'm just letting the commissioners know in case you hear. I'm waiting to hear back from the township. The trustees are on board, but we just have to go through the motions of them abandoning that road because it's just, it's, Alex's pictures really don't do it full justice until you drive down that road.
But did you see there's one house on that end?
Well, there's one house, but then it's sort of like the house is here and then as you go around the bend. So I think their goal is, is where that property line ends is where they would close the road so that way they don't impact that resident. But the one house that's abandoned, that just, it has a ravine on the property and people just drive back there and dump over the ravine.
Does this house need to be raised or?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. This is an ongoing problem for this area?
Yeah, and I can tell you, we've met with some of the community leaders out there. And it's a sore spot, and it's literally a couple stones throw away from where they wanna build a new gymnasium for the King Kennedy Center. And so they're really working hard to try to clean it up. But yeah, when you've got these streets where nobody essentially lives on because the one, from the one from the ball field out there, you can literally get on that street, no one would know that you were there.
Would this be something the land bank might be able to help with?
You know, I've asked them to talk to the land bank. Frank Harrison's kind of spearheading this. So I'm sure Frank's gonna make contact with the land bank.
And Nikki, at our recent meeting, we did go over in detail some areas in that community and talked specifically about unused portions of roads. So that may be in the pipeline. And Frank has met with the new land bank executive director along with RL. So I think there hopefully is some progress.
I think, you know, they're getting some new houses built. I think Habitat's putting some houses out there, which is great. There's more eyes and it's kind of bringing the community up. I think they're excited about the gymnasium. So they're really trying to do a lot out there to try to prevent this. But, you know, it's just gonna take time and perseverance.
Yeah, okay. Well, at least we're heading in the right direction, right?
Yes, yes, we are. That is a good thing. Brimfield Township. Yesterday, Brimfield Township trustees met. I had originally planned on attending the meeting, but you'll get a travel form here where I had to run down Marysville for a part to get a truck. And just why I had to drive down to Marysville, Parker Hand up them, once they pull your part, they don't ship it right away, or they usually ship in five days. So it made more sense to go down and go get it. And it puts the truck back up and running yesterday, probably about mid-morning by the time I got back. So I had Dawn attending my place, and so that's one of the reasons why Dawn is here. Fell under other duties.
We submitted a proposal contract to Brimfield Township to which he, Nick, which was to go line item on the contract and specify the issues that he had with the contract. I did write all of those down. At the end, he put a proposed motion on the trustees that said, you know, he would like to extend service for ninety to his, at the same cost that they're currently paying, and then submit a survey. We offered, it suggested back in October to submit a survey. And even when they get the survey results, they don't know what they're going to do, right? So to me, I think we edit the changes they wanted in the contract and we submit it back to them. That's my personal opinion. He also chose to vote no on the motion to do the contract extension and survey. Correct.
What is that again?
So he made a motion to accept, or to do the three-month extension at the current rate they're currently paying.
Mm-hmm. Right?
Extend the contract for three more months.
For three more months, for us to pay half of the survey that they would like to submit. Mind you, we suggested this survey back in October. And then he voted no on his end.
So are you suggesting that we just make the changes he wants in the contract?
Correct.
Submit the contract back to Brimfield, but not go with the extension? Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely.
So what happens January first? Because?
That brings into our cart problem that we were talking about originally. They have about, what, four thousand carts? We are currently out of carts. So they're thirty-three thousand dollars, the quote that we currently have is thirty-three thousand dollars to purchase carts, additional carts. Do we order more carts? Or does Brimfield terminate their contract, you know? Like, so we're kind of stuck. And the fact that we've suggested back in October to do a survey? The fact that you voted no to the survey and the motion?
But see, I feel like that's being punitive to the residents.
Absolutely.
To stop service and especially at this time of year when most people have more recycling, you know, because of the holidays. I mean, I thought, I thought, 'cause Nick called me and said that they declined the contract and that they put a motion that they're gonna get a proposal to us. They wanna extend the contract. He's working with their attorney, I guess, their attorney, for ninety days to try to work out because they're still convinced that they wanna, they wanna survey done, but they want an outside company to do the survey so that it's unbiased to both them and to the district. And they were willing to split the cost for the survey. And based on the results, then try to, I mean, he's still very adamant about subscription.
Yeah.
And, and so I think.
See, I think that's where, that's where my problem comes in. They had two, they had two requests, take off the tax bills, which we said, okay, then your rate will reflect the thirty-five cent a month increase to cover the cost for Todd's team to do the invoice. But we've told them time and time again, subscription is not even part of the discussion. That is not what we do. And yet, that, I mean, we could do this survey, and it's my understanding, they want on their subscription. Well, you know, this is, this is the survey that we just sent out in Ridgestown Township. We've done this for Suffield, Palmyra, Ravenna Township.
Yeah, but Bill, for not fairness, Ridgestown declined to pay for that survey because they wanted to review it and have input on it. And it was sent out, and it wasn't, according to the trustees, it was sent out, it wasn't sent out to all the people that receive recycling services, and they declined to pay for it.
Well.
And our district is paying for this.
I have a difference of opinion with that trustee because we use the auditor's website for all of our addresses. And unfortunately, you had two trustees there talking to both Dawn and myself. And the stories, you know, and generally, you know, I prefer to be the point person on this than I delegate out. But back to, back to Brimfield, because Ridgestown going out.
I understand it, but my point is, that has gone back to Brimfield, and that's why they're taking the stance.
And I can tell you, you know, I will meet with that trustee and I will, you know, remind him about how many times we've done the same thing for a year, gone back and forth, and it's a lot of those.
But you know what, Bill? I think we need to get a resolution because my concern is, their contract's out December thirty-first, and what are we gonna do? I mean, we have a meeting date, time scheduled for tomorrow. If we are out of contract with them, we have, there's one of two options. We don't pick up, or we pick up and we don't get paid for it because we don't have an agreement. And I think it would be very punitive to the residents because obviously, they are heavily recyclers, it's my understanding, and I think you've stated that as well, to just cut the residents off because we are not coming to terms with the trustees. I mean, I think this is their, their way of extending the contract so the services continue. We still continue to get paid, but they're requesting a survey to be done to their residents that they want done by a neutral, outside company.
That they chose.
Okay, well, if you guys, I mean, he says you found one.
See, I guess, I guess my problem with that trustee is, it's, here's what we're gonna do. Here's what we're gonna do. And I think you saw, I think I handled myself quite professionally when we, when we met, that I was there to try to resolve it. But we, you know, you know, saying that our surveys, we slant the results, we don't do. We keep all the results, so if somebody had a question, here you go, have fun. And I just think, I think that honestly, I think Nick and I just need to sit down face to face and say, what is the problem? You know, we are not gonna do subscription.
That's the problem.
You keep asking, you keep asking, and we keep telling you, we're not going to provide a subscription service to your community. So until we move beyond that, everything else is just another, another issue. And I agree, I know a lot of people in Brimfield, they are super wonderful people. The last thing I wanna do is hurt them. But if I extended the contract, it would not be for the two twenty-one. Whatever we decide on would have to be retroactive, much like we did in Kent, much like we did in Streetsboro. Thing to keep in mind, we started this process negotiating with Brimfield early in the year. They didn't like the fact that, you know, in the contract, we have that non-Mighty Heart obligation to the prosecutor's office. So they hired an attorney, and then we didn't hear anything. We're waiting on them. And then all of a sudden, they send out the RFP. They reject the RFP for what reasons? I, all I've been told was ours was technically wrong. And as I explained to them, their RFP was all over the place. It was very difficult to follow. It was very difficult to follow and.
But I, I think, I think to answer that is they were requesting an, an RFP for, um, for subscription. And you, what you proposed was nothing. I mean, I guess they're thinking you should have stuck with the, the RFP, the proposal and, and sent in like Kimball and said, we are not interested in bidding in this contract.
I did put in my.
We did alternate bids, right?
We did alternative bids. We said, we're not doing subscription. Here's an alternative, here's four alternative bids.
The, the fact that he voted no to his own motion to do the survey tells me something, right?
He vote, I can't believe.
He voted no to his own motion and.
It still passed though, right?
Correct, it did. But we did suggest sending a survey out in October. So two months later.
But see, I think that, sitting down with a meeting with them, between them and our district, everyone focuses too much on the past. If, if all we're gonna do is point fingers at the wrongs in the past, we're never gonna move past this. And I, and I've shared that with Mr. Quay. I said, Nick, if, if, if you're just wanting to, you know, constantly remind us of what we did wrong, we're never gonna move forward. We, we should stop all discussions because, you know, we, we need to learn from our mistakes or whatever we did wrong and move this forward. Because who's really being, gonna be penalized for this? And it's the citizens. And they do recycle quite a bit in Brimfield. And so to say, um, December thirty-first, that we're out of contract and we're not gonna pick up the recycling. And I, I mean, I would just hate to see that, especially being this time of year and I understand. But they're, they're proposing to do an extension for ninety days to try to work it out and, but they want a, a survey done.
Well, uh, you know, I'm not opposed to survey, but I'm just opposed to us being told who they're going to use because I know nothing about the company. I, if we're going to do a survey and be expected to pay for half of it, I'd like to have some input on who, what, where and why. If, if your decision is to extend the contract, my counter to that would be, we'll do the ninety day. However, whatever rate changes there are, are retroactive back to January first. Because if you remember, you know, while we're going through this with the two previous communities, we're providing a service and not getting paid for it. The other thing is too, um, we're gonna have to memorialize this. I'm sure Chris McGury will want something in writing to agree to it because in that way, it's not a he said, she said kind of situation. So there's gonna be time to draft up, whether it's a contract extension, an MOU or whatever, relatively quick to do. But today's your last day in session. I'm not sure if they meet again the rest of this year or not.
Well, they are meeting on Friday at seven o'clock and I. In the morning.
In the morning.
And we're supposed to have, we have a meeting scheduled for nine, you know. But the, but the problem is, is I don't see how it's feasible for them to get their attorney to write a letter or whatever.
Right.
Or a resolution to propose this extension and get it to our prosecutors to review in time for us to, to sign off. I mean, our last day is supposed to, and I don't know what your plans are, Vicky. I mean, after we're done with session, I know sometimes you go out of town, but, I mean, we're really pushing. But it's my understanding, if we do not have a contract, our only option is not to pick up or to pick up knowing that we're not gonna be compensated until we can get back in session and they're back and the prosecutor has reviewed everything. I mean, that, there's gonna be several weeks left.
You know, I think one thing is being overlooked here is I understand the residents that, believe me, I understand. I used to live in Brimfield. I have a hard-filled residence. But you're putting all the burden on solid waste. It's not them that is choosing to do this. Like they said, they did offer a survey in October and so.
Well, it's not necessarily.
Are they thinking about the residents? I mean.
Well, a, and that's the thing. You know what? The residents are, are, are basically being put in the middle of, of this. Because our district and the trustees can't, can't come together. And like I said, I sat in a meeting with them and it seems like, you know, we can't get past the past and errors that everyone wants to point out on both sides. And it's like, we're never gonna get anywhere.
What were you calling out?
Can I say that? I don't think it's between us and the township trustees. I don't. They did an RFP. They did not receive any, any bids on the RFP that they submitted. So we submitted an alternative bid. We're the only ones that bid, all right? I did go through and edited the contract to what request they wanted made in that, which is in front of you. To me, I think we, we give this back to them with the request they made. It's subscription service. The price is in there. All the changes they want is in there.
It's not subscription service.
No, it's. Right, it's mandatory subscription, right, right. It's not subscription, right? So to me, here's our contract. This is our, our lowest bid.
Dawn, what changes did they want made to the contract? What did they have issues with?
I have them highlighted in red.
It's a red.
I mean, how, do we have, I mean, this is something I feel like we should have had discussions on before we're, we're down to the end, end of December.
They just had a meeting yesterday.
No, I'm talking about what are our options if we don't come to an agreement with them?
Well, I think we have discussed that. We just never made a decision.
Well, my thing is, we're here on the last day and we basically, I mean, have to decide if we're gonna pick up recycling or not after December thirty-first.
We have put our bottom line out there. We have negotiated. We have dropped our prices. We have, we have put our bottom line out there.
And what we're asking for is no different than what we're asking for from other communities in the county. It's not like we're being punitive or anything. We're just in line with everyone else.
Well, it seems like you've bent over backwards.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Not even that you're being punitive. I mean, they have worked very hard.
And to say you want to do a survey now, like.
Yeah, well, I, I know there's a lot of contention because they feel that them and a lot of the communities were misled. And, and they actually go and to say, lied to, that they, it was their responsibility to handling recycling. And the higher revised code says, no, it's really the commissioners, you know, we've taxed the, um, townships who have, you know, been cut by, you know, local government funds with paying for curbside. Really, should they be the ones paying for it all along? It's really our responsibility. And even though we have the right to assess to the property owners, we did not. They also felt that they were misled because the district told them over and over, you have to go to curbside because we're doing away with drop-offs, but yet we have a huge list of still drop-off communities. I mean, there, there's a whole lot going on here.
Well, I, I can tell you, when it came to the drop-offs, yes, we would like to close the drop-offs. But I have never gone out and said, you have to convert to curbside. That's their choice. The price will be paid when we get this analysis done. And, um, you know, it, it's amazing how much I talk when I'm, when I'm not even present in the room or, or how my words are misinterpreted, um, you know, the, you know, when the district, when the, when the district first started.
It, it's not just Brimfield. I, I've heard it from numerous communities and they say the same thing. And I'm just, I'm just telling you, it's not one community reiterating this.
Then have them contact me. I'll be more than happy to sit down with them and, and straighten out, whatever.
I mean, we, we put our bottom line forward either, you know, I, I suggest that we give them back the contract and they, and they can make a decision.
Okay, so what is our decision if they do not, if they do not renew the contract? It's my understanding, this is another issue, we don't really have to have a contract. We never had to have contracts. It, it, the burden falls on the county. So we don't have to necessarily have a contact, contract. But we also cannot, not, um, bill their customers without having public hearings. And I can tell you, their attorney has advised them that if we were to have public hearings specifically for Brimfield to, to charge them, they, that he feels it would be punitive and they would take us to court to all extreme measure. So I'm just, I'm just putting it out there.
But why would we have a public hearing just for Brimfield?
I don't know. Well, how are you gonna get paid?
Well.
We're required to provide recycling, whatever that be, whether it be curbside, drop-offs. We allow the community to contract outside with, you know, a private hauler. That meets all the qualifications of us allowing recycling and providing.
I would never come in here and say, we have to have a public hearing for the rates for Brimfield. It would be across the board for the county. But I guess, again, I, I struggle with the residents, you know, because I know everyone's.
Well, that's where I'm at.
I guess, I guess the best thing is Dawn's right, we give them back the contract. I, I mean, and say, here's our final offer.
We've made your changes.
You're, we've made your changes. We, we can look at those in the contract. But again, until you get off this, this request for subscription service.
That's the problem.
And, and future conversation is, is really kind of moot because we can't move beyond that. We've said, we're not gonna provide it. We, we can't provide something you've requested.
Yeah.
And even the private sector has said, we're not gonna provide it. There, it's just not feasible.
Combined with, with garbage.
Yeah, and then, then you've got other issues that don't, don't have to deal with. But, uh, you know, I, I just think that.
So to this extent, I, I'm gonna tell you, we're not gonna get on your contract before the end of the year. What are we gonna do January first for the residents of Brimfield recycling? That's, that's my question.
And that's your decision. I need direction.
And I need to know whether to order any carts or not.
Bill, so is, this has been jumping around a lot. So is your recommendation that we do this ninety-day contract?
I would do, this is what I'm saying. We hand them back the contract that we gave them and said, this is the, this is the working point. This is what we're gonna base all future discussion off of. If we, if the board decides to do a ninety-day extension, then because we're at the end of the year where, you know, it's impossible for you to come back into session next week because of the holidays, that by January, when, when you come back in session, the ninth?
The ninth. Well, if we had to, I mean, we could because the difference is.
Finish though, I, I, cause I asked the question. I, I was trying to get it.
Here, here's, here's, here's what my recommendation would be. If this is, if this is the route you're going to go. Again, give them the contract. Say, this is the basis of all future discussions. We're not gonna discuss subscription. We're, it's just, it's, 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 it's over. We're not gonna do that. If you truly want to extend the contract, then by the fifteenth of January, wherever your meetings fall in, because they will have one, we have to have something for everyone to sign off on. You sign it, send us the resolution. We'll all bring it to the board with the resolution for signature. However, any rate increase, whether it's weekly or every week, has to be retroactive to January first. And what do we do if we just simply cannot come to an agreement? I mean, that way you protect the residents. But again, you know, I, this whole thing.
We put the ball in their court.
We put the ball in their court, but at the same time, you know, long-term, I have an operation to, to worry about. And converting them to every other week as well as Rootstown has a positive impact on the district and our ability to run our routes more efficiently. But I, I'm, I'm gonna be very upfront with that trustee and say, you gotta move beyond the, the subscription. We have bent over backwards time and time again because they approached us and said, we want a contract. And, you know, I think that trustee thinks that I work for him because it's like, well, you gotta have it to me by then or deadlines. I work for you three. If you three, if two out of you three give me direction, then I'm gonna follow it. I have other things that I have to do. I have other communities. I have an operation.
But Bill, I, I have a question for you. For the subscription, have you ever given like data? Or have you ever even attempted to try to see what we would need subscription to look like?
Because see, that's where you guys, you know, he feels like you're just saying, nope, we're not offering it. Well, he's like, well, show me why you can't. I mean, what, show me some numbers. Show me what subscription would have to look like. How, you know, how many people would you have to participate? What price would you have? He said, you know, cause they called out, I think, Sue Fields and actually you, Vicky, in the meeting yesterday about, um, I think Sam mentioned that, Vicky says, we just can't do subscription. They wanna know why. And, and again, he said all along at our meeting, if he would have just gave the numbers that we gave him the other day to show what the three dollars the first year, the three seventy-five the second year would look like, we were still gonna be short with the three dollars bi-weekly. But by the second year charging the three seventy-five, we would then be at least back in the black and be able to recover what we had lost in the first year. So.
I guess, I guess for the subscription, I would have to do a range, you know? Are we gonna have twenty-five percent? Are we gonna have fifty? And then at a certain breakpoint, it's not even worth going because it still costs the same amount to drive down the same street, whether you're picking up one house or ten of the houses.
Now it requires software in the trucks to say, this person paid, this person didn't pay. I mean, there's a reason they didn't receive any bids.
Yeah, because here's, here's the thing. I can, I, you know, I can put my cart out and not pay for the service. And our, you know, if it's the regular driver, he's gonna say, okay, this house, you know, I don't pick up. And all of a sudden, if there's something out, it, it, it creates some, some new operational challenges for us.
But you see, I don't think you've ever told them that. I think you just tell them, nope, we're not offering subscription.
We have told them that. They're just not listening to me.
Well, he's saying he's never seen any numbers, nothing or.
I've, I've not created those numbers because I, I just know from an operation.
I'm just trying to move past, trying to get past the subscription thing. He thinks you're just being bullheaded and saying no. I mean, that's, that's the problem.
I, I don't understand that since they did not receive bids. They understand it's not a cost-effective way to pick up recycling. They did not receive any bids. No one thinks it's a cost-effective way to do this.
And, and you know, I, I think too, the other thing that I would, I would request in this, in this ninety-day extension is I don't have Facebook, but my phone rings off the hook and there's Facebook posts made about. And so if we're gonna keep this cost neutral, or we're gonna keep this neutral or no influence, if we agree to do the survey, then they're gonna have to go silent, anything to do with solid waste and recycling during the, during the, the, uh, survey time period. That slants it too.
I don't know. So your recommendation is to do a ninety-day extension?
I would put the contract back in their lap, say, we need a decision tomorrow. If we agree, I, I will be there tomorrow at seven o'clock. If we agree to a contract extension by the fifteenth of January, there has to be something drawn up and signed by both parties. Pricing increase would be all retroactive to January first. But we're, this, the contract is the basis of all further discussion. We are not discussing anything to do with subscription. We will not agree to do a survey and ask for a subscription. It's just, it, it just clouds the issue even further.
So what do you need from us today to carry that forward?
I just need marching orders to say that you're agreeable with that and that's the message I can convey to Brimfield tomorrow morning at seven o'clock.
I am agreeable with that. I am.
So just to recap, you're gonna send that back with the revisions that they, they were concerned with?
We'll drop that.
And off that. And then if not, then we would entertain the three-month extension. And then what about the survey? Cause I know that is gonna be a requirement.
Well, I, I guess here, here's the thing. Um, I think it's time for Nick and I to sit down face to face and discuss this. But again, my feeling is, um, my recommendation to board would be not to participate in any survey that does subscription. We've already said, we're not doing subscription.
I'm also fine with that and I.
And then I don't think they would want to do the survey anyway.
No. And then I wonder if they would even do the extension. That's what I'm saying. We have to have solutions for different choices to where we're at. And again, January first, what are we gonna do?
Right. And, and I'll be back. You're in what session tomorrow? I'll be back tomorrow.
Well, we are not in session as a solid. I'm sorry to interrupt Kathleen. But you had a question, Sabrina. You said, what if we come to the end of the contract, whether it's, you know, three months into Janu- from January or end of December thirty-first? And do we stop delivering or are you stop picking up?
Picking up.
Or what? Or what? And I thought you also said that the county is required to pick up recycling. Is that true?
Not picking up, we're required to, to offer recycling.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood.
So, what does that look like? I mean, does it go back to drop-offs?
Okay.
Do we do curbside?
I misunderstood what you said about...
Yeah, no, no.
Thank you very much for taking my turn and answering.
I think we can move on. I think you have the direction you need. I think we should skip shredding and talk about that in the next meeting.
I, I agree, Kathleen. We have, we have an executive session that we need to handle, shouldn't take more than five minutes.
Okay, so I'll move to go into executive session for the purpose of G1. And it is, is it a compensation or...
Yeah, you have to give a...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I, I'm a rookie at this.
One or two. Well, we want it for one or two employees.
Two employees.
So, it's compensation of employment.
For compensation of a public employee. So, ma- motion has been made.
I'm second.
Roll calling.
Was there too much compensation employment?
Yes.
It's two different people, two different situations.
So, do we have two different executive sessions?
One of the commissioners has to say that, not the clerk or the director.
What?
One of the commissioners has to say the purpose, not the clerk or the director.
I said, yeah, I did.
What's the first reason for the first amendment?
Let me redo the motion because we...
Yeah.
There's a lot of interruptions. So, I will make a motion to go into executive session for G1, compensation of a public employee.
That's your, your strike compensation, okay.
I will second.
Roll calling.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Agreed on that?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.